Try it again.
Dave's on his way down.
Well, it's recording. You might catch him that maybe we got it.
No.
They didn't get to that yet.
No, well, whenever their next meeting is, I suppose. Alan knows it because I told him and he you heard from Alan Zaco back there. That's who I'm talking to. You heard from Dave Jackson, right?
Yeah.
It should be on this month's agenda.
That's what he says, yep. Presumably.
So are we in?
It's recording.
All right. What about the people's logging in? Anybody logged in?
Well, I just posted it. I don't know why the old is not yet working.
And to give me a special ID to get in on that bandit meeting.
Well, I'll tell you what. We're going to go ahead. I'm going to pick up copies of what they brought in any applications so we can start that process. Where are those applications right here?
So the record meeting is being recorded.
This will be. They're not packed. They're not put together as a package. All right. Well. I don't know. Let's see what he's got. Just the application. All right. All right. Yeah, you just have to separate these. I don't know if anything else is there or not.
Well, all this is the application. So I need that with them. Names and addresses.
Application names and addresses. And what else have we got? That's all there is?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we don't. We don't check for accuracy. If we accept this and it turns out that it's inaccurate, then we would schedule a hearing date and then at the hearing, we would not do anything except tell you that you don't have an application that's complete. And we would have to move the process forward another month to the next time that we could get together. I have no idea whether it's completely. We do not review those at this time. So if you didn't. Mike, has he met with you and have you reviewed? Does he have all the elements required? No?
Absolutely.
There aren't any. So. Um, okay. Are we? Are we on the internet now, Valerie?
Yes.
Okay. So if there. I don't see that anyone's joined us, though.
So it could be that this should stop the white line. Is that I had that all pulled up and everything looked like it was working. So.
Okay.
I'm not sure as to. We'll have to just look at remote studies. And about least of me, but I checked all of that before. And it all worked.
Well, I don't know whether there's somebody. I haven't got a call from anybody except Steve. So if someone else is trying to get in and they can't. Um, they haven't called me. Double check. No calls, no texts. Except from Steve. I didn't bring it. All right.
Was there? All we need to do is check if the checks were turned in, I guess.
Yes, we're just checking. She said the two checks were there.
See, I saw that too.
I had to go and create a new script for the meeting. Because.
Zoom is a mess.
Calendar where am I? Yeah, but I think that doesn't matter because I don't think that's linked.
What's being posted on the internet is wrong.
Link. Yeah, that but that link. The problem exists anymore.
So I created a new one.
Yeah.
Posted that to the calendar for this.
When she posts an announcement of our meetings, she puts a link in there for the zoning commission.
Yeah, but what happened, we learned last week when I was setting up the BZA was we used to have an individual link for zoning BZA and one other, I think. And in the in the Zoom calendar, not the internet calendar for the township, all those links were gone. So for one time for the BZA, I set it up for that night. A link that was going to work and then we posted it to the calendar. But we needed to go back and change it and and re-verify that all of the links on the internet calendar were tied to links in the Zoom calendar. And I don't think that ever got done.
What about the link that is out there on the internet?
Yeah, well, somebody found it because.
If you go in public notices and click on our meeting, does it bring it? Bring them into this meeting?
I'm just telling you that it went to nowhere.
Oh, it went nowhere.
That link is defunct. That's in the township calendar, I believe.
But it's not it. I'm not talking about what's in the calendar, though, Steve. I'm talking about what's under public notices on the township website.
Yeah, which is the same as what's on the township calendar.
I don't know if it is or not.
Well, I think it is. Somebody found what you put out. Somebody just joined.
A new meeting.
But.
New link. Put it on the calendar.
Yeah.
But everything got changed. Everything got deleted.
All right.
If you go to the township, whatever it public notices or calendar. There are. There are links there that are defunct. And we learned that last month at the BZA meeting. And so I did now what Valerie's done. But nobody's gone in and updated the township calendar, much less verified that those links are there.
Okay.
So the best thing to do tonight is record it and post it.
All right. Well, that that's good. Let's do that.
I mean, because if you put if you record it, at least you'll capture it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then next week when I'm I'm sorry, I'm getting race cars ready to go to Watkins Glen. So I'm a mess here. So.
And that's going to be quite a drive for you.
Oh, no, it's an easy drive. It's going to be more fun on the track. So let's just get this recording.
All right, Steve, that's.
That's all you can do tonight.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I should have come over sooner.
I understand now. I didn't. We didn't know what the problem was.
And then next week when I'm back, I'll come in and sit down with you and the new assistants. And we'll figure out how to tie this stuff out. So that we have a path going forward. The technology is working fine.
Good. It's just user error.
I didn't realize that problem hadn't been fixed.
Okay, and that's not your responsibility.
No, not well.
The last time we had we had Carol.
It's a collective township.
Supposedly here. And he didn't. He said he didn't know how to fix it.
Who?
Carol Calhoun.
Well, he can't get in. No, but you gotta do that. Never mind. We'll fix it next week.
All right, yeah. Thank you. So we're recording, but we're not on Zoom.
No, we are. We're recording. It's on Zoom. It just has a new link that I had done about 10 minutes ago. We do have a somebody on Zoom has found it. So I just did a whole new link, a whole new invitation.
Would you make sure you get the name and address for whoever joined on Zoom?
Almost never give the address. I always ask.
It looks.
It's an odd picture, too.
And that is if that is a picture of someone that's joined us on Zoom, then we want to know who that person is.
No, thanks. I'll tell they refuse to answer that question since.
Okay.
Directly.
Well, that we didn't. Yeah, what what we want to do is make sure we ask for it.
Always do.
Yeah. Okay, so, sorry, folks. We've been having problems with Zoom for at least two months. And they don't seem to have it fixed yet. I hope Steve is right that he can get it fixed next week. But we will. And we have a meeting next Monday. And we'll find out if it works then. Okay, let's get back to this application that we have from Jared and Rachel Jacobus. What we're looking at here is an application to rezone 5.49 acres gross or 5.14 net acres. And the hearing date. Uh, we haven't set yet. This will be application. We're up to seven. So this will be HTZC 2407. I already got that. I wrote it down on my copy.
I'm trying to get an address.
Um. Okay, I'll wait for you to get back. Because I've got to ask you a question about the checks that you received.
Thank you.
Let's see. This is the problem.
Got somebody else. I know. You have to get up every time. There's a. But I can't do the rest of what I need to do.
Let me sit here and do that.
No, you can log yourself in.
Yeah, but if with the setting we have on that's either either.
That's all right. We can. We can change the settings so that you can just let anybody in without permission.
It didn't give me that choice under the login I'm using, which was set up for zone. I have a bit one. Maybe they're fat, but see if we can come up with another option.
Yeah. Well, for five years, we used it the other way.
Well, that's who I was using the previous login. So I don't know what got changed and then might have increased their security levels.
Well, for right now, if it uh, if there's somebody that joins and we hear the beep, we'll try to make sure that we let them in and try to find out who they are. Okay. This application. Now back to you, Valerie, for the checks.
Yes, sir.
You have checks for.
Five eighty-five.
I know five eighty-five.
Eighty-five cents.
And that would be for the acreage fee. And for the flat application fee, you have that check.
Chelsea two hundred dollars.
All right, very good. Now let's look at application 2407. If we receive it tonight.
Twenty-four oh seven.
It's twenty-four oh seven. And the hearing date. Our next regular meeting will be September 3, and we will be discussing extensively the applicant. Not. It's not an application yet, but what we'll be taking a look at is to whether what has been prepared by Jim Steele Smith and
Holly.
Holly, Maddie.
Yeah. Can we squeeze this in before that?
I beg your pardon.
Can we squeeze this in before that?
Uh, that's what I'm thinking. You know, we could tell Holly to plan to arrive at eight o'clock instead of seven thirty.
Yeah.
And then schedule this hearing for like seven forty. How's that? Everybody in agreement?
September, September 3.
September 3.
Which is a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday because Monday is Labor Day. Now, September 3 at eight forty. I'm sorry, seven. Okay. We have it scheduled. Uh, Mr. Jacobus. Look forward to seeing you then. All right, thank you. I apologize for the delay. I just hope we get this Zoom thing straightened up. It's just got to be such a headache.
Spatting. Calm down.
Well, let's hope so.
And that'll be a big help.
All right. At this point, then, we'll recess the regular meeting and open the hearing for HT 2406. It was scheduled at seven thirty-five, so we are running a few minutes behind. It is now eight o'clock. And we do call the role for the first hearing on HDZZC 2406. Here.
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 Brittany Harper.
Here.
Come on, stop grass. Running green wild.
Here. Okay. Uh, all members of the zoning commission are present for this hearing. And let me get these papers out of my way. Well, members of the public, the way that the hearing will be conducted is commission members will comment and or ask any initial questions. Uh, within there will be no public interaction at that time. When that's finished, we will then provide an opportunity for the public to comment and or ask questions. During this time, when the public is able to participate, please follow these procedures. If you are present in the room, step up to the podium and state your name and address. Only one person can speak at a time. At that time, give your name and address so the secretary can record it. Please be brief and factual. Please do not bring up a point or question previously addressed and or asked. Remember, only one person can be heard at a time. So do not uh, speak to another member of the audience uh, while a speaker is at the podium. Do not carry on your own conversations. If a certain group wishes to be heard, please have a spokesperson for the group. What we're hearing tonight is a small modification in our zoning resolution where we are looking to add a section to our article 21. And we will take a look now at that application, members of the commission. What we're proposing is a change in section, Article 21, sec. And what we're adding is Section 21.18, dealing with temporary structures. This is a section of a current zoning resolution that appears in multiple places about the uh, zoning resolution in individual articles. So rather than repeating that paragraph uh, each time, we are simply put it into the uh, yeah, the developmental standards so that it will become Section 21.18. And there will be a reference made to it wherever it had been previously uh, in the document, in the resolution, and it will be deleted. Temporary structures for that are incidental to construction. And it's just one paragraph. So that everyone understands what it is that we're dealing with, I will read the paragraph. I normally don't read the entire uh, document that we're dealing with, but in this case, it's just one paragraph. A temporary structure such as a mobile office in or temporary building of a non-residential character may be used incidental to construction work on the premises or on adjacent public projects or during a period while the permanent dwelling is being constructed. The user said structure shall obtain a permit of such temporary use, which permit shall be valid for six months and may be renewed not more than twice. Renewal of the permit shall be at the discretion of the zoning inspector on the finding of reasonable progress toward completion of the permanent structure or project. The zoning inspector may re- may require provisions for sanitary waste disposal and water supply as he she deems necessary. The fees for such permit and renewals thereof shall be established by the Board of Township Trustees. Said temporary structure shall be removed not later than 10 days after expiration of said permit. Also see end of. Now, that's not part of the doc. That's the paragraph that we're at under Section 21.18. Anybody have any questions about it on the commission?
Clarification, th- this text exists already. It just exists in multiple places. We're just.
It's in. You are correct. Yeah, this is the one.
Moving it to one section.
Yeah, when we met back in July, we were going through the other four articles. And we found that.
We found references.
References is 21.18 and 21.18 wasn't there.
Because it had been deleted.
This is fixing that problem. Yeah. But the language that was there then in those articles will be deleted and replaced with, as you just described, the referral to the section. That's all we're doing. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Okay, I have a question. What applies to say if somebody parks an RV or camper type trailer in their front yard? Is that considered a temporary structure? No, there's a section of that. There's a section in in here somewhere about only being able to do that for two weeks. Okay, so, okay.
That would be under the individual articles. This relates to you're building a new home. Or any commercial uh, building may be going up and they'll want a trailer set on the property to keep their plans in, to meet in or whatever. So it's temporary.
Okay.
Uh, let's ask our zoning inspector about it to the extent that how many? How many of of these temporary structures have you had to deal with, Mike?
Had a couple of people call and ask about them, but I've not had to deal with any of these temporary structures.
Okay.
The text, I think, on motorhomes and campers that 10 days is occupied. It can only be occupied or lived in for 10 days at a time. It doesn't. I don't think there's a prohibited, but two weeks. I don't think there's a per I don't think it's prohibited to having it just parked there.
It may have to be set behind the front line.
Front line or something like that. But yeah, just. So parking in the parking in the front yard might be it. Got to be covered somewhere.
Yeah, I think it just has to be set behind the house front.
Yeah, without looking at um, the individual zoning ordinance or the article, rather, that's where it would be. This is uh, under the development standards. So it's going to apply across the board to everything. Okay? Any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, I'm going to. Go ahead.
I just I was gonna wait. Um, I just want to clarify that the the end of the paragraph, um, the clause in parentheses is not part of the of what we're approving. That's got to be stricken.
Yes, also see end of 2112. That would be stricken.
Okay. Um, number two, um, if we look at definition of terms article for Section 401E, it reads pronouns identifying individuals by gender are interchangeable. And so on the third line from the bottom where it reads sanitary waste disposal and water supply as he or she deems necessary. I think we just need to pick one.
I prefer keeping he she.
That's not what the definition reads.
I think our definition is apparently should be they if we're going to do that, but I think I think our definition needs to be reexamined, too.
It says permit. It should say permit applicant. Sort of.
Actually, it's the zoning zoning inspector.
Oh, so yeah, zones. Yeah.
Or we could say, um, as as deemed necessary and just leave it without a pronoun.
That would be fine.
Is there a suggestion for a wording change here from someone?
Deemed necessary?
Yeah. So take a he or she. Make it deemed. Yep.
For sanitary waste disposal and water supply as
deemed.
deemed necessary, just delete it.
Yep.
And then you don't have any reference to it or you don't have any use of it.
Um, a question for.
Say woke. Like, everybody needs to be woke.
Sorry about that. The heck with it. What?
Interesting.
Permits. So this is calling for a temporary structure permit and and the the schedule of zoning fees calls for a trailer permit, six months and a trailer permit extension, six months. Is that what you would use? Or do we need another?
Well, I use whatever you guys have in there. I mean, it depends on what what we're talking about. It could be like you had the school over there to have it for how long years? Then you've got one that's probably going to be put at another church that's requesting it. And that's what I tell them. You've got six months and then we'll look at it as long as there's construction going on. You could possibly get six more months as long as.
But you would you do that under the trailer permit? Or just?
Under the what permit?
It says trailer permit, $200 for six months.
Yes.
Extension, $100 for an additional six months. Okay, so we do have a permit that's referenced in 2118. Okay. The only other question I have, and this is just to clarify for my benefit. On the second line where it reads, uh, or a temporary building of a non-residential character may be used incidental to construction work on the premises or on adjacent public projects. What? What's an example of an adjacent public project that would need a temporary office on somebody else's property? temporary office on somebody else's property?
Oh, like a, um, electrical substation construction or something like that, they may need a temporary office.
Want to lease property to put that built, that on temporarily.
Yeah.
And, but because they don't own the property.
Yes.
But they don't have enough room to put a, a trailer.
Right. That would, that's the only reason it's in there. And I don't know whether it happened or not, but there was a, a lot of discussion at one time, a couple of years ago about, uh, with the electric company wanting to do just that thing. That is lease some property to park some equipment on temporarily. That wasn't necessarily a, a trailer that they were going to use, but maybe it was. I don't know what the details were. But
That's not unusual over here, just, uh, south of you, Mike. The electric company leased that, that, that little writing rank on the corner there.
Yeah.
And they use that for a staging area and put equipment stuff in there.
I'm sorry.
But, uh, yeah, so a lot of times they might do that and put a trailer there, an office trailer. So, yeah, it's not unusual.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Not for me.
All right, with that then, I will open it up for the public to ask any questions or comment on this, uh, proposed change to our zoning resolution. Okay. Please, uh, give your name and address.
Keith Campbell, twenty five, twenty nine, South State Route six oh five, Lino, Ohio. What if it's a natural disaster and it takes longer than whatever, say, you know? Is, is that, did it happen? Reason for exception for something like that?
I was, I didn't catch that, I'm sorry.
If it was a natural disaster, say it was a flood and, and wiped out a bunch of houses, tornado come through or something, and it's gonna take a long time to get that fixed, I mean, uh, you know, how, how's that working in that scenario there?
This is, this, this is language that's been in the zoning resolution for I don't know how many years, years and years.
Yep.
We're just moving it, we're not changing it.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, I understand the nature of your question.
Well, but say you did need a permit for longer than, I guess, then
A year and a half.
A year and a half. Then do you apply for a new permit and start over again? Is that how that works?
I don't know, I mean, that's the thing.
It's gonna be up to probably the trustees, if it goes past what the resolution says.
Or the BZA.
It is, you know, is there some something there that would happen to come up? I just, I don't, you know.
I mean, those kinds of hardships, I think, would come before the BZA first. If you go a year and a half, if you've gotten a, a permit and two extensions, and you're still not done, then you gotta argue your case before the BZA, it's a hardship.
Same, the BZA would be allowed to give an exception for something, some, some, that, because it's a hardship.
Yeah, alright.
I think it'd be pretty easy to prove hardship.
Have you had any of those over the last ten years? Think, no, okay.
I hope it never do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, anything else from the public? We went online. Can't see their names, but there's a couple up there.
You've got Robin and John.
All right. Apparently they don't have any questions. All right, with that then, we'll close the public portion of the hearing and move forward.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Mister Chair, inasmuch as application HTZ C twenty four oh six. Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, conforms to the intent of the Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan and, and appears to meet all applicable aspects of the Harlem Township zoning resolution, I move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission recommend to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees that said application be approved. Corrected, as corrected.
Thank you, yes, as corrected. With those corrections being in, um, the third sentence from the bottom of the paragraph, the sentence reads, the zoning inspector may require provisions for sanitary waste and disposal, waste disposal, sorry, waste disposal and water supply as delete he slash she, and change the word deems to deemed. As deemed necessary is the way it reads now.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Louis. Any further discussion? Hearing none and all in favor, uh, of the motion. No, I'm sorry, for the zoning resolution changes, we need to, and, um, in a hearing, we need to have a roll call. Hi.
Johnny Manson.
Bye.
Tommy.
Hi.
Brittany Hopper.
Bye.
Going very well.
Bye.
Okay, so this, um, amendment to the zoning resolution has been approved. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this hearing.
And we adjourn the hearing for twenty, HCZZ twenty four oh six, second.
Seconded by Brittany. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, and I know Valerie has the form that will sign, so, um, she'll get that to us for this one. Sign it. And then, um, rather than reconvening the regular commission meeting, Valerie, I'm gonna ask you to now call the role for the next hearing.
Another hearing, one four oh five, other articles.
This will be, yeah, uh, application HDZ twenty four oh five, this is a we are reconvening the hearing that we started on July first.
The Kavler?
Here.
Johnny Manson.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Okay, we are now in session on, uh, hearing or application HDZZ twenty four oh five. Uh, just one moment, please, we'll get right to it. Uh, wanna put some information here, and I'll pass this form along. Now we, as I said, this is a, we're reconvening the hearing on application HTZZ twenty four oh five, which, um, is changes in existing articles. Article four, definition of forms. Article seven, AR one agriculture residential. Article eight, FR one farm residential, and article fifteen, PCD, planned commercial and office district. At our last, uh, hearing, when we began, we did not have the recommendation submitted to us as yet from Delaware Regional Planning, we have that now. Um, Valerie, do you have that, so that you could, uh, read that from page six and seven? This is the request that was submitted to Delaware Regional Planning and, um, the request is for Harlem Township. Since we've been working with our RPC staff for several months on numerous amendments to existing sections of its zoning resolution, the work is ongoing, and in June, the zoning commission voted to initiate the following to be reviewed at a hearing in August twenty twenty four.
Okay.
Article four, definition of terms. What's been done in this article is clarification of the agricultural definition, density, and residential facility to ensure the definitions are current and consistent with other parts of the resolution. Article seven, agriculture residential AR one, updates agency terms, amends lot size to use gross acreage, clarify setbacks, references all numbers by Arabic nu- numbers, as well as spelled out numbers. Corrected internal references, ensured consistency in language with FR one. Article eight, farm residential, updates agency terms, amends net lot size to only subtract road right of way, clarified setbacks, references all numbers of, by Arabic numbers as well as spelled out numbers. Corrected internal references, ensured consistency in language with AR one. Also removes one or some conditional uses. Article fifteen, planned commercial and office district proposed amendments reference this planned district process that was recently amended to a new procedures article for the district. Setbacks have been removed from general standards to this article for clarity, and a perimeter buffer is added. New details are added that are, are similar to new overlays, including screening for service areas and loading zones in general standards for lighting. Generally, there are several items in the resolution such as temporary structures, home occupations, nuisance impacts such as vibrations, glare, explosion, et cetera, where a new section was created in a single location, and other districts uh, will relate to that section when applicable. Right, what is the staff recommendation, Valerie?
The staff recommendation recommends approval of the Harlem Township zoning resolution text amendments. Seven, eight, fifteen to the DCRPC, Harlem Township Zoning Commission, and Harlem Township Trustees. In the commission slash public comments, Ms. Holt made a motion to recommend approval of the Harlem Township zoning resolution text amendments, four, seven, eight, fifteen, seconded by Mr. Weed. Uh, the vote was unanimously four, zero opposed, motion carried.
Okay, so Delaware County is recommending approval of these changes. Further discussion from any of the members? The changes that we postponed taking any action specifically for, one, we wanted to get the recommendation from Delaware Regional Planning, and the second was, um, this issue with temporary structures which we resolved. Because that language was it, deleted from articles seven and eight and fifteen, um, and it now reads that in those articles, it reads temporary structure incidental to construction as regulated in section twenty one point one eight. That was what we just approved in the previous hearing. So we do have it in place now. I don't have any, uh, other notes in terms of additional questions that we needed to address. We did cha- uh, I'll take that back, we do have some, uh, lettering that needed to be fixed, which um, was done in the art, they copied it. Go check that. Here, let's see. Make sure that that was there. Article fifteen, section eighteen point oh two. It's the lettering corrected. Yes, it, it's been corrected, L, it's now L and M, which is
Article seven, uh, I noticed a number of instances where we haven't written out the number like we indicated. Do we need to correct those? Oh, and seven point, seven point oh four. What is that? E and F as well as K.
Okay, so I have to find that. Make sure that we mark it.
Yeah, seven oh five, there's one too.
Yeah, and seven points, oh, oh, is that in the, oh, fourteen, there it is, and one.
Yeah.
Team one. Fourteen again. And in seven point oh six, letter D. Why do we do that? Is that like legally something?
If, if regional planning approved the version that we're looking at, then, then we change it, is that a, are we?
Oh, yeah. We're the ones that have to make changes. Um, they don't approve, I mean, they have, they recommend.
They specifically decided not to change, I remember that.
Their recommendation is that it be approved, so we change
I do, I know what you're trying to make.
A wording, even, if change something else, it's possible to make those changes, yes.
Yeah, so we don't have to extend the back.
It does not go back to them for another review. So e- even if we make a major change, it doesn't go back. But we do have to inform them that we've approved it, then they receive. So specific pages that you're referring to.
So page seven oh four.
Valerie, you need to make notes of these because all this has to be submitted to Scott. Because he will prepare the final draft that will go to the trustees.
Okay, so page seven oh four, letter E. Uh, the number twenty in the first sentence. And letter F. There, there's a bunch of them, there's five, one, one hundred, three hundred. Oh, sorry, I missed one. We're going back to letter C. There's fifty, the percent. No wonder he missed them, they're hard to find. Um, and then if we go to page seven oh five, K, number one. There's three hundred feet. And then page seven oh six. It's section seven point oh five. Seven point oh five, letter B. The number fourteen days in the first sentence. And then letter C, we've got fourteen and one that need to be corrected. And then moving on to, it's page seven oh seven. I'll give you this, it's seven point oh six, letter D. It says, uh, four hundred and eighty square feet in the last sentence needs to be updated.
So, in, um, some, on page seven oh seven. All of the, all of the it, the areas listed there, those, those are numbers without.
Yeah, we specifically talked about that and decided not to change those.
Yeah.
Oh, while we're on, um, article seven. Um, under, uh, on page seven oh six, under section seven point oh five prohibited uses. Except this.
Six, sorry, I'm just trying to catch up with. Under prohibited uses.
Paragraph E, except as specifically permitted by section seven oh three E. And I went back and seven oh three E. He deals with temporary structures. Um, and section seven oh four F, which deals with churches. Well, I think that's a, an incorrect reference. I haven't been able to find what correct one is.
D maybe?
Yeah.
Well, that's for farm labor. I saw that and I went, oh, yeah, there it is, but I don't think it is. This was page seven oh six to start with.
I think it is D. I, I, I still think it's D, it should have been D.
He is temporary structures incidental to construction.
No, it's fine, it's, the seven oh four one I think should be D.
Oh, wait a minute. I've thought, oh, yours all about four or, or three?
Seven oh three, E is fine.
All right, so that one's not fine, that one's fine. Seven oh four is the one then, okay.
Yeah, I think you're right, Johnny, because it talks about manufactured mobile home. And that D is talking about one manufactured slash mobile home.
I disagree. I think it's a, it, it's a temporary structure. Um, and in this case, it's a permanent structure for full-time farm labor. I don't think it's the same reference.
But it's, it says, except as specifically permitted by section seven oh four F, uh, D. Then no manufactured home will be permitted or occupied.
Yeah, so it's saying that is allowed, but nothing else.
D is allowed.
Yeah.
So that F should be a D.
No manufactured mobile home or, okay. All right. Um, and then section twenty one eighteen, which is the actual section.
All right, so are we in agreement that section seven point oh four F should be D as in David?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, want to make sure, so that needs to be corrected, you got that one Valerie? So, this is a change on page seven oh six. Seven, section seven point oh four F needs to be D as in David. All right. And then section twenty one eighteen. It's fine, I don't, nothing else need to be addressed in that item. All right. Well, Tom, that was a good catch, we missed it multiple times.
We probably changed that lettering multiple times too.
Well, that's why I wanted, we missed it, yes.
We have number problems in eight.
Article eight, I didn't see any, but, okay.
And then to, uh, not to leave it unsaid, but in most cases, uh, when we reference an article or even a section, uh, it's generally followed by of this resolution. So there's no doubt what we're talking about, not that it would be, but in some cases we don't. So, uh, I mean, just on page seven oh four, for example. Um, just, just as an example, under, um, F, in the third line, shall meet the requirements of article twenty one of this resolution. And it's always, and that's ninety percent of the time, it's, that's the wording that we're using. Um, and we go down to I cemeteries, the second setbacks prescribed by section twenty one point one oh of this resolution. Uh, should we simply make that wherever we've missed it, that insert that, that language?
There's gonna be a lot of that.
That may be, but is it better to have it consistent or?
So anytime we reference a section or an article or article, say, of this resolution, because it's, it's.
Seems awfully redundant to me. Maybe we should eliminate it instead of adding it.
Should there have been a statement somewhere that says any, any reference, like a, like an overriding statement that says any reference to kind of like your pronouns, um, thing, any reference to an article or a section, and it's assumed to be of this resolution.
Never seen that. Yeah, but I've never seen that. Anyway. As I said. For, that's the kind of thing that, that, uh.
If, if you want to make a or ask Scott to, to do that, that's gonna take. Cause I mean, he's gonna search on several different things.
Articles and sections.
Yeah.
It, it shouldn't take him that long. If this were, if this were in, uh, Word instead of PDF, I would have started, I would have gone in and done it. And if he wants to send me a Word version of it, it's easy enough to, to pick them up. But I can't make, I can't, I can't make changes, track changes in a PDF version, I don't know how.
So, he, you don't have the soft, uh, the software.
And, and he's only gonna do it.
Can't do it if you, if you got the software.
But he's only gonna do it for these particular articles that are in the hearing.
Correct, correct.
So we're still gonna have things that aren't.
We'll get to them when we get to them.
Yeah.
No, unless you're planning on going back and dealing with all those articles that we've already approved.
Can't, can't change that, but, but going forward, I'm just saying, it's the kind of thing that will, whether, whether it would ever make a difference, I don't know, but.
It, it doesn't seem significant.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not a ma- it's, it's not a major, a major change, but. Um, anyway, um.
If it is, if it is something that you want um, Scott to be asked to do, then put that in the list that Valerie will be sending to him in terms of the corrections that need to be made before the final, now, we need the final copy in order to get it to the trustees. Now, the debt, the red line copy, we will also submit to them. Now, I don't know, I don't know how he will address this part in terms of showing that this is a change that, that we're making, because he had accepted all the changes that we had submitted to him. Uh, so whether or not we can.
There's no red line.
There may not be a red line copy, so I, yeah, I guess that is what I'm saying. That will show any of those places where you're asking for this change. And say that we want, if we want him to do it, it, there may not be a red one. Shows where conditions would be.
I'm only one out of five.
So. But what's in, in terms of what we, uh, want to change, we've already identified, uh, the changes that you do know for sure need to be made in article seven. And we can go back over that, now, we add this to the list. Now that, I'm assuming that, Tom, if we're gonna do it, we can do it, you'd have to take a look at article seven, article eight, and article fifteen, those are the three that he has right now. Whether it's going to, whether, I don't know how often it will, it appears, or how often has to be there.
Almost every page.
So, what's the pleasure of it?
I don't think it's necessary. That's just my personal opinion.
I don't think it's necessary, though. We want to take, let's take a, let's, let's make a decision regarding whether or not we want to direct Scott to make this change, and we'll do that by motion. Tommy, will we, a motion or I can make a motion? Okay, the motion would be, um, to add the phrase. Tell me exactly what you want.
In this resolution.
Um, actually, it's at, where we, where, wherever we reference an article or a section in the zoning resolution, uh, the language should read either article of this resolution or section of this resolution in quote marks.
The only other time, okay. So.
I don't know if that's clear.
In all instances where a reference is made to a section of the Harlem Township zoning resolution, following that reference, the phrase in this resolution.
I think it says of this resolution.
Of this resolution.
And it's not, yeah, and it's not just sections, it's also articles.
Articles and or sections.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Have you got the motion, Valerie? We're stumbling over it, but we're trying to make it. Well, can you read it back so we can vote on it?
So just add the phrase of this resolution for articles or sections of when referencing is made to the resolution. But I don't know if I have.
Generally.
Is that satisfactory, Tom?
We can vote on it.
Okay, so.
Only if there's a second.
Tom made the motion, I'll second it. So we got, we have a motion on the table. What are we doing with it? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 I think all those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. Nay, I think the vote was three, two. So, we will not be directing Scott to make that change.
I like Louis' suggestion about adding a blanket statement somewhere if we ever get to that article. Keep that in our back pocket.
All the other.
Yeah.
Or all the other sections and articles that we have either touched previously or aren't gonna touch for a long time.
Yeah.
Cover all of those.
Okay. Anything else?
In article.
Monday's for.
Oh, in article eight, on page eight oh four, C. We use Arabic numeral instead of the Roman numeral after article. We've always used the Roman numerals after the word article.
Oh, we slipped up somewhere?
Page eight oh four.
Eight.
C. And it's the page number, not the article number.
Oh. I was looking at the section number, yeah. Page eight oh four.
To be I B. Letter, letter C, the page number eight zero four.
Oh, I missed that.
It's listed as article four, like the number four, and it should be.
It's an Arabic number, it should be a Roman.
Yeah.
That's on page eight oh four.
Letter C.
It'd be a Roman numeral. I, B.
Also found another number reference on, um, is seven oh one? Or, we didn't catch this previously, seven oh one, um, section seven oh three, D one.
A, what page are you on?
Page seven oh one.
Two of them, huh?
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty and fifty percent.
Seven oh three, D one, fifty percent and a hundred and fifty. I always need to have the letters, the numbers spelled out as well. Just like the other ones that we talked about.
No, on page seven oh one, you got that one Valerie? Very good.
I need, I need some help with this on page seven oh seven. Under E. The very end. In case of flag lots, the front setback shall be fifty feet measured from the point at which the lot meets the frontage requirement set forth in seven oh six B. And I'm reading seven oh six B and I'm trying to make sense of it. Maybe it's in there. But I don't see it. The lot meets the frontage requirement set forth, the lot meets, meets the frontage. I don't, I, I don't see what it's referring to, when it refers to seven oh six B.
Okay, where's that reference again?
So, I'm looking at page seven oh seven.
All right, I'm on seven oh seven.
Under E.
E, front setback.
Correct, and the very end of that. In the case of flag lots, the front setback shall be fifty feet measured from the point at which the lot meets the frontage requirement set forth in, I assume that means in, in seven oh six B. When I go back to seven oh six B, looking at measured from the point at which the lot meets the frontage requirements, I don't see it, I don't see it talking about. Talks about lot frontage, but I don't see where.
Well, the frontage requirement is three hundred contiguous feet.
This is in the case of a flag. In the case of flag lots, the front setback shall be fifty feet measured from the point at which the lot meets the frontage. Do you know what they're talking about?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
That's all right.
Well, let's, let him answer, it seems perfectly clear to me, but let's let Mike answer, he's the one that has.
I don't think he's, I don't think he's got it.
But isn't.
What Tom is asking about, there's a reference. Oh, I've gotta find it again now, seven oh seven, front setback. It's on page seven oh seven. At the end of that front setback, it states, in the case of flag lots, the front setback shall be fifty feet. So it's fifty feet from the point at which the lot meets the frontage requirements. At which the lot meets the frontage requirement set forth in seven oh six B. When you go back and you look at seven oh six B. Lot frontage is three hundred feet. So you go back the drive into, you get to the flag part. And then from that point, you go back until it reaches three, so if it's an odd shaped. Lot back there. I don't know how far back it would be.
But I interpret that saying is.
It could be immediate, it could be another hundred feet.
It'd be depending on the.
But. Is that okay? I mean, you understand what that means?
Yeah, I do. I mean, it's obvious, as soon as it gets to be buildable, you got fifty feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so once, once you get your three hundred feet of frontage, no matter how far back in the lot, you have to go to get that.
You gotta go another fifty.
Fifty feet, okay, I'm cool with that.
Yeah, that's what it, that was the way I interpreted it. I know we had that discussion with Scott. When he was here, trying to deal with that because. Trying to figure out, okay, where, where's the front? Of the lot.
They still have the option if it's some weird odd shaped lot, if they don't agree with that. Set in stone. Yeah, it's there for.
Um, that's one of the things. Exactly, that it's there for. Okay. Anything else? Okay. That, that required no change, Valerie. I don't know. I don't have any more, but.
So Mike, what would you do? With the application we got this, this evening? Where they only have two hundred and forty-two feet of frontage. Or an AR lot. There is no current. Where's your setback measured from?
I haven't seen that, so I.
It's a non-conforming lot.
I'd have to look at it. Like I said, they didn't bring it to me.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't have anything to do really, I mean, I'm just saying, that's an example of where you wouldn't have three hundred feet anywhere.
Yeah, right.
It was, it was not before the resolution came in, then it's, it's grandfathered in.
We don't know, I mean.
That's, but that's what I would look at, at my board to see, when was that lot created? Because we, it's created after zoning said it had to be for three hundred feet. Then it, and it's, it's an issue, but it was non-conforming before the zoning came in. It's grandfathered in.
And let's say it was, let's say it is grandfathered.
I would say if it was created before.
And they wanna split it. You know, flag lot that didn't exist. Doesn't exist until now.
That's not relevant to our discussion.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Unless you're, unless you're gonna say that. We change the requirement for frontage or flag lots. Are you, if you're suggesting that, that's what we would have to do.
I'm not, I'm just saying that, that, when we look at it, we look at, when it was created. Versus how.
I don't think it's relevant to our hearing.
Okay, that's.
Only reason it would be relevant is if Tom wants to recommend changing that part of the article so that. The frontage requirement is different for flag lots. Than what we've already, what we've got in here right now.
Well, it's not the frontage as much as, as the setback. Where do you measure this, the setback from? And I don't think it's clear, but that's gonna be up to you.
That, I'll have to look at that and see what you're talking about.
Okay. As long as, um, we're. Talking about the frontage requirement is still three hundred feet, we're not changing that.
Yeah.
Even though there may be lots out there. That are non-conforming lots that can't, they don't meet that standard currently. To be, um, zoned AR one. After their zone FR one. What, you know, the frontage requirement is different.
It'd be just like the lot we had over there. That it was a non-conforming until it split down, then it was a conforming. So it could be that. I said, I haven't seen that, I can't.
Yeah, well, we don't know what the plan's gonna be. That's not gonna be part of our discussion, but. Um, I think what we're saying basically is it's not really relevant in terms of what we need to do here. But it will be relevant to discussion of that. Zoning change that is being proposed. All right, anything else?
I didn't find anything.
All right, at this point then, I will.
We're moving on to, if we're still on AR, right?
I thought we were dealing with all four of them at once.
Oh, I thought we were dealing with the ARs, okay. Um, I do have.
Well, no, there were, we went through them all. Previously, line by line, so to speak.
I do have.
What we were trying to deal with was, I didn't know we were even gonna get to what we've got to tonight because those were things that we had previously cleared.
Okay.
We're going back and rehashing things that we had already previously agreed to.
Okay.
So I was looking at the reason that we were having to recess the hearing was tonight, so. If there's other things, fine, Tom, just, we, we can get to them, so.
Real quick. Uh, on page eight oh one. Um, in the title. I think I brought this up. The last time we met. Um, the purpose there is created within Harlem Township, a farm residential district. FR one, the title should read farm residential district.
Oh, the word district is missing, I see what you're saying. Okay, Valerie, page eight oh one, the top of the page, the word district needs to be added. Following the word residential, that's, that's what Tom has found.
And under eight, eight point oh two. Uh, the first paragraph. Shall not be less than two net acres excluding rights of way. And shall be controlled by provisions of this article of the zoning resolution. Um, I think what we voted on was road rights of way. And not any other easements or.
Yeah.
So should that excluding road rights away?
Yeah, just insert the word road.
Yeah, that road, road should be there.
Right of way or ways?
Rights of way.
And rights of way.
Just adding.
Or just adding one word, after excluding the word road needs to be there.
What's next, Tom?
Uh, that's, I think.
That's.
You got the article four.
Um, yeah, it's in Article four.
And there was another section which I was concerned about, but I'm not sure where that was. Another reference to, uh, to a section that I thought was, uh. Question eight oh four C. Yeah, I'm, okay, eight oh, eight oh four conditional uses. A. See. So if we're, if on page eight oh six.
Yeah, six.
Under, uh, letter D. It references section eight oh four C herein. Um, no manufacturer or mobile home should be placed or occupied in the F one district except as specifically permitted in. Section eight oh three or eight oh four. I don't see that eight oh four C has anything to do with. Manufactured or mobile homes.
Where are you again?
So I started on page eight oh six under D.
Page eight oh six.
And the D is at the top. It's page oh six, it's the second paragraph down, D.
And it reads except as specifically permitted by section eight oh three E, which I haven't looked at, and section eight oh four C herein. No manufacturer or mobile home, et cetera. So I go to eight oh four C and does it deal with manufactured or mobile homes?
Now, eight oh four C deals with building height limits.
I don't have.
No, eight oh.
Eight oh six development standards. I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were referencing.
Eight oh four conditional uses.
Now you're going.
The, so I'm on page eight oh four. Uh, residential facilities is defined in Article four.
But.
I don't see anything about.
You know.
Mobile homes.
No, it's F. So this one was opposite of the other one. We changed F to D or something like that, and this one we'll be changing C to F.
Eight oh four F, you're saying. Little homes. Okay. And eight oh three.
You get that Valerie? On page eight oh six. Letter D at the top. Um, section eight oh four C should be eight oh four F. I think.
I.
Well, F is the model homes.
Okay, so there aren't any real, real mobile homes, model homes could be different, huh? Okay, skip that.
Yeah.
Can we just leave it out?
Uh, yeah, I'm not seeing.
It's just reference eight oh three E.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that's what needs to happen, you know.
Um, eight oh, eight oh three. E temporary structures. But that doesn't. Speak to my manufacturer of mobile homes. You know, for conditional expanded home occupation.
I'm not sure, I'm thinking that maybe this is a carryover that should have been caught in this. Um, um, seven. With farm labor, I wonder if that's where it's coming from.
I think we just scratch it.
The whole paragraph.
Well, I think the eight oh three. E is still valid. Cause that's the temporary structures incidental to, to construction. So that's still valid.
Yeah, well, that's true.
So just take out the reference to section eight oh four C.
Okay, cause in section seven, they allow for that for farm workers in section eight or Article eight. Those, they're not, they're not allowed at all.
Okay.
Okay, so instead of changing it to F, we're getting rid of it completely.
So it'll read except that specifically permitted by section eight point oh three E herein. Comment, no manufacturer or mobile home shall be placed or occupied.
Correct.
We're gonna delete the rest of that.
Just, just take out section eight oh four C.
Yeah, just strike or section eight oh four C.
Yes.
What about no manufactured? Uh, slash mobile home shall be placed or.
But that, but that's what, that's, except that specifically.
There's no exception for that.
Except for eight oh three E.
That, that is still the prohibited use is no manufacturing.
I go back and look. Is that temporary, is that the temporary?
Yes.
Okay. Three. Eight oh three is permitted uses. Tempor, oh, that's it, okay, yeah, it's there.
What else, Tom?
All right.
You got more?
Just on that, so we got.
So all we're deleting is on page eight oh six is.
Or section.
Or section eight point oh four C, everything else remains as is.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yes.
I guess. Reading it now, basically what we're saying is no manufacturer or mobile home shall be placed or occupied in the FR one district.
Right.
Is that true? If you can't put a manufactured home on a two acre site, I don't think that's.
Not as a temporary structure.
We're not saying that. We're saying.
Saying at all.
No mobile homes in F one.
And I don't think that's what we wanna do.
Well. Yeah, there's. Several manufactured homes that have been placed.
So did we?
The requirement is that they be on a foundation. They have to be a permanent installation.
But they could be on a two acre site.
Yeah, on a regular site.
And if we make this change.
If we're prohibited use, if we adopt it as written.
Yeah. Or adopted as changed.
Or as modified, well, you can as written, it can't comply eight oh four C.
That was, I'd say that we need to change those wording. We need, your, your points well taken, Tom, I think, because we, we are not prohibiting a manufactured home.
But did we lose something in eight oh four? Was there something, was there supposed to be a, something in eight oh four that we lost? Let me go back.
Well, just go back and look at your redline, yeah.
No. Nothing, nothing in the previous copy was redlined in this, uh. On prohibited uses section. Yeah, we got rid of, uh, one manufactured mobile home.
Four C used to say, one, you know, one manufactured mobile home. Arm labor only, that same text from Article seven was in Article eight.
Yeah, and that was, that's what we took out.
Picking that out.
We broke.
Essentially said. No manufacturer or mobile homes in F one. Even if it's for farm labor, which is not what we wanna do, and I'm not even sure we wanna limit it to farm labor.
So we just wanna get rid of section D and relabel the EF and D.
Let's see if we can fix it, yes. Um. By dropping the word manufactured, you could just say no mobile home. Drop out the word manufactured.
Or, is what we're trying to fix the, the non-temporary nature of it? Like, we don't, we don't want temporary ones, but we're good with permanent ones, is that what we're saying?
You are saying that.
We're, we're, we're saying we want them on a permanent foundation, right?
Right. We don't want a mobile home brought in, left on its wheels and parked on a pad.
Yeah, should we say no temporary manufactured mobile home?
Cause there. Yeah, there are homes that are brought in, uh. That are manufactured, and then they're assembled on a site.
Yeah.
Put together and they put.
Put their own foundation, yeah.
Permanent, yeah. You can't move it once it's installed.
Maybe we just wanna add the word temporary. No, somebody could bring a mobile home in and put it on us. Park it on a, on its wheels on a slab if. Say it's permanent.
So seven.
No, uh hmm.
Wouldn't you just? Wouldn't you just refer to section twenty one eighteen, which is the temporary? Structures.
Yeah, um. Permitted by section eight point, eight point oh three E. Herein. No temporary structures shall be placed or occupied in the FR one district. And just. Just refer to temporary structures, that's what. Doesn't matter what kind of structure it is, whether it's a mobile home or manufactured home or a. I mean, they bring in trailers usually for an office. But they're now using those uh. Storage units.
So how were you, how were you changing this?
I was ju- I was suggesting maybe we change it so that instead of it referring to no manufactured slash mobile home. Shall be placed or occupied in the FR one district. Change that to read. No. Temporary structure shall be placed or occupied in the FR one district.
Except as specifically permitted.
Right, the except part's still there.
Because that's a temporary structure that refers back to twenty one eighteen.
Correct.
Yeah, so you'd wanna reference twenty one eighteen in there as well, right?
Well, it.
Eight, yeah, eight, eight oh three does.
I'm. I'm okay, I mean, it it changes the meaning significantly, but I'm okay with. What it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that we, I think. What uh he was pointing out, I think it came from. The idea of it being a uh structure that would be used temporarily for farm labors, or they could use it for farm labor. But we were eliminating.
But but if you just say temporary structures, does that include? Things like a small shed? Or a chicken coop? Or something that's, th- those could be temporary structures. It wouldn't be temporary homes.
So what do we do in seven?
And specifically permitted in section eight oh three E. Well, maybe we just drop out the word placed and leave the word occupied. Yeah. A shed, I guess you can view that as a temporary structure.
But they don't have foundations, most of them.
There's a lot of them that they just. Hold in their own, you know, they just drop them in. So it would be, in that sense, it's a temporary structure.
Yeah.
But he gives a permit for that.
Cause this one says you can't do that. No, I think, I think what we're worried about was the occupying part.
The occupying part, yeah. That that's the reason I'm saying we could take the word placed out, maybe it it.
Okay.
Does that work?
So no temporary structures shall be occupied in the FR one district. After the herion thought. Right.
Except as specifically permitted in section eight, eight point oh three E. No temporary structure shall be. Well, then we don't even need it, because temporary structures are never to be occupied. Maybe this old paragraph needs to be dropped.
I don't think it would miss anything if we got rid of it.
So we take D out and then re-letter. And then we got D.
Definitely.
D E and F, it ends with F, G is gone.
Well. So in. We go back to article seven. It reads no manuf- except as permitted. Earlier, no manufactured or mobile home or temporary structure shall be placed or occupied in this district. So we are saying in even AR one. That no manufacturer or mobile home.
What page you on?
Seven oh six.
Yeah, it is what.
Manufacturer or mobile home can be placed in AR unless it's a, unless it's for. Farm workers.
And that's not the case.
And that I it's consistent with what we're saying about. FR one. Cause if we take, if we get rid of that completely, then we're allowing. And maybe we want to, uh, mobile homes and manufactured homes will no longer be a prohibited use in in FR one. And it's, it's is prohibited in AR one. For that language.
That same.
Clearly currently prohibited as well. Cause that's what currently in there.
But but people are. Site are 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 putting manufactured homes on foundations. And I'll be like stop. There's no difference between a manufacturer and a site.
Difference between a manufactured home and a mobile.
Yeah, but between a manufactured home and a. Right?
It it, yeah, it it doesn't work, I guess. It doesn't pass county code or state code.
So. I think where we have manufactured slash mobile home or temporary structure, and this is again on page seven oh six. I think there's a. I think, I think we're backing ourselves into a problem.
Something's broken there. We're allowing something in FR one that we're not allowing in AR one.
Okay, what if in? On page seven oh six. We just say no mobile home or. Temporary structures shall be placed in this district. Get rid of manufactured. And let's keep those exceptions that we've already allowed.
Yes. And shall be placed or occupied, so leave it that way.
Yeah. I think so.
Then would we just take that it's that exact same text?
And move it into.
And use that for AR, for FR one and just change the section references?
I think we could.
Okay.
Wait, but again, we're saying no mobile homes now, or mobile homes in AR one or F.
And no temporary. Unless they're part of construction.
Right.
But not really occupied. A mobile home could be occupied. And we're saying, no.
And and it's not something new that we're saying, this is existing, existing text.
Yeah, I think, I think taking manufactured out of this. Eliminate some of the problems that that were. That we may be creating. Um and and just as long as we've got seven oh three E, we're okay. Seven oh three is temporary structures and seven oh four E is.
Farm workers, I think.
It's farm. And and there we're saying a mobile home can be occupied.
Yes, I mean, it also makes reference to another section where it talks about can be occupied.
So uh in the article seven one. We cross out manufactured. We wanna cross out temporary structures as well there?
Well, it's not in there yet, oh.
Seven point oh five E. It says.
Seven point oh five E.
It says no manufactured slash mobile home or temporary structures shall be placed or occupied in this district. Whatever is, yeah.
Yeah, and I think.
So we just in seven point oh five E, we wanna remove the word manufactured slash, right? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
I'm suggesting we also get rid of or temporary structures in that section.
Seven, okay.
I don't think so, because I think we wanna keep that, we we have the. We have the exceptions already listed for that.
Yeah, cause we're referencing twenty one point eighteen.
But it's, but but it it comes back to, do you consider chicken coops or sheds on skids? Temporary structures.
To our definition of temporary, do we have a definition of temporary structure?
Probably not.
Probably not.
In the absence of anything else, you go to the Webster's dictionary and whatever is defined there as a temporary structure. Uh that's, that's the fallback in the zoning resolution.
A temporary structure could be. A doghouse is a temporary, and that's not what we're. We're not trying to. Limit that.
So I would say get rid of the words or temporary structure.
Are there? Instances of a temporary structure that's not? That would. It's something we would wanna limit.
Well, I think we are limiting them. In section twenty one eighteen. Um, we're just not referring to that.
Just only as incidental to construction. So a a temporary structure such as a um. Like a real car or a a a shipping container. We take temp- uh temporary structures out of here, then a shipping container would be.
We address gods and stuff like that someplace else. We, I mean, we have addressed them. Someplace. Maybe in the general standards.
Well, we're still dealing with seven. I I don't know that we've reached. Uh a decision here about. So we're taking the word manufactured out of, out of D. On page seven oh six. Section seven oh five E, we've agreed to do that.
Yeah.
Taking the word manufactured out. All right. And then we were talking about whether we leave the word temporary structure. Shall be placed or occupied in this district.
Permitted uses are accessory buildings and accessory uses, including.
I know, that's what I was thinking about was accessory use.
So we have.
Accessory buildings is permitted.
Yeah, like, isn't a, is is a chicken coop, say, considered an accessory building?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Chicken coop for chickens.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
I think just even a a shed could be a a accessory building.
Yeah, so maybe we're.
I think we're, we're overreacting here to the word temporary structures.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think leaving it in is is fine, um, because we do permit accessory buildings. And a shed would be considered to be an accessory building.
And it's been like this for all this time, and we haven't had an issue with the temporary structure, so I think we're okay.
And the language is not new, it's just that. We're looking at it very differently than we have. This has never been. Explored this in depth, I guess, until tonight.
Okay.
All right, so we leave that and we take the word manufactured out.
Okay, let me go back then to.
So that's all that's being changed then on seven oh five E.
Um, ex- except where where it says section seven oh four. Should be D.
Which you already have written somewhere.
That was from before.
Yeah. And then the word. Manufactured is deleted. Those are the only two changes in seven oh five E. All right, now let's go back to where we were on eight. Page eight oh six.
Eight oh five B.
Were we gonna just copy that same text? Into. D. And switch the eight oh three reference?
Well, we're keeping the eight oh P, we're getting rid of the eight oh four entirely.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we say.
Get rid of manufactured.
Get rid of manufactured. And it reads no mobile home or temporary structure.
Yeah.
So we have to add that in.
Insert temporary.
Shall be placed or occupied in FR one.
And and in in this district, so in FR, in the FR one.
Yeah.
Except that specifically permitted in eight oh three E instead of seven oh three.
So Valerie, that's eight oh five D. We're saying. Did you have a stricken or section eight oh four C?
C.
We're removing that. And then.
And then.
Removing manufactured. And then after mobile home, we're inserting or temporary structure.
Include shall be placed or occupied.
Yes.
Yes.
Now.
Okay.
Just, just, just so we're clear, I'm too clear maybe. In in. In agricultural residential, we have provisions for farm labor. In farm residential, right now, we've eliminated that. There is no farm.
It's a two acre lot.
Correct, you're correct. That, that's what we've eliminated.
Well, it may not be a two acre, it may be.
It may be bigger, but.
Maybe bigger, but. But zone.
But it's less, yeah, it's known as if our.
I mean, all of, all of the golf courses on that far. Right, we beat this to death.
Okay. Anything else? We got that change clarified, s- satisfactory Valerie? Okay, good.
We want article fifteen?
Yeah, we can go to anywhere.
Not back.
I went through them all.
Not going back again.
We're going forward.
Yes.
We've done. Four, seven and eight, and now we're looking at fifteen and we're not going back. Unless we can find something in fifteen that requires us to look back.
No, don't say that.
Fifteen oh three prohibited uses, page fifteen oh two.
But that's completely different. You're going after the manufactured mobile home thing.
I know, but it's referencing fifteen oh three J. And there's a fifteen oh three J.
There's a fifteen oh two J.
Maybe that's what, yeah, that's probably what it meant. Cause that does show mobile.
Yes. So in fifteen oh three D, where it references section fifteen oh three J, it should be fifteen oh two J, I think.
Yes. Oh, yeah. And it's under. Page fifteen oh two.
Section fifteen oh three point, yeah, fifteen oh three D.
And the J is what's wrong.
No, the J is good.
I'm sorry, the the three is wrong. J is correct. Should be fifteen oh. And the J is fine the way it is, you just have to change. The three to a two.
And we previously added a twenty one sixteen, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay.
It's already.
Did that.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I saw.
Yeah, twenty one sixteen and twenty one uh seventeen were previously. And that's why we had to approve twenty one eighteen first tonight.
Yes.
And very small thing on page fifteen oh one. One, second paragraph under section fifteen point oh one. One, second paragraph under section fifteen point oh one. Um, at the end of the second paragraph, article twenty three is bolded, it doesn't need to be bold. I said very small.
And there's the planned commercial and office district have to be bolded too? I don't think it does.
Should it be bolded?
No.
The one that's in the first, first paragraph.
Should any of it be bolded?
Just the heading.
It doesn't really have to be bolded anywhere except the, um part of the title.
Focus, right?
Yeah. So don't bold the, in the first paragraph, planned commercial and office district.
Oh.
Don't ban bold in the second paragraph, planned commercial and office district, P C D. And don't bold article twenty three.
Yeah, there's three places where the bolding should be.
Okay, one more time, Jenny.
Page fifteen oh one.
Got it.
Section fifteen oh one purpose. First paragraph, don't fold planned commercial and office district. Second paragraph, under that same section, don't fold planned commercial and office district, P C D. And don't fold article twenty three. Mm hmm.
Anything else?
Hmm. Yeah, last page fifteen oh four. K three, do we need to spell out three thousand?
Oh, wait a minute, fifty, page fifteen oh four.
Yeah. A three.
Oh, K three, sorry.
K.
Yeah, three thousand.
Three thousand isn't spelled out.
Well, three thousand should be.
And also in K four, fifty percent isn't spelled out. Sorry, I didn't mean to take your. I didn't have those ones, so that's fine.
That's under four, yeah. You see that one? Well, you can mark it, it's K four, fifty percent.
K three.
Yeah. Fifty percent.
It's all I found.
Needs to be in words, it's not there.
One very small thing.
Another.
Very small, on page fifteen oh three. I don't, they don't get smaller than this, uh, under, under I signs. Reads except as controlled by article twenty two of this resolution, the word resolution should be capitalized. Capital R, that's all. I don't see anything else.
You ended on this moment.
I don't even know how you find these things.
He has an I for it.
He surely does.
We, we ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Is everybody else ready for a motion?
Yeah.
You can make the motion and if there's no discussion, it'll, it'll happen.
Mr. Chairman, inasmuch as application H T Z twenty four oh five conforms to the intent of the Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan and appears to meet all applicable aspects of the Harlem Township zoning resolution. I move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission recommend to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees said the application be approved.
Second.
As correct.
Uh, well, yes, definitely as corrected. Sorry.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? No comment.
What, can I?
Go ahead, you got something.
You've already.
Well, I.
It's over.
Um. So I'm looking on page fifteen oh four, this is more of a theoretically. Page fifteen oh four under L. Where it basically says all the detail planned from in the development standards. Um. Can be changed. The Township Zoning Commission and or the, the Board of Township Trustees may impose special additional conditions related to the development with regard to type and extent of public improvements. I get that, maybe public improvements to be installed. Landscaping, development improvement, I don't know. What, why there's a, I don't, I don't understand what that, and maintenance of common open space and any other pertinent development characteristics. So basically what this one says is a developer who come in with all of the he's crossed and eyes dotted according to the development standard that we've put in here, spent a lot of time and work doing, and we can say, well, we, we're changing that, we're gonna change the development, we're gonna change. And maybe maybe let the trustees do it, but I wouldn't say that we shouldn't have that authority.
I think we should keep it in. I think this gives us a, a chance to do a final uh look at, uh, after we've considered all public comments and stuff. I think we keep it in. I, I think we keep it in too.
I don't see it causing the developer a problem from the perspective of it, it's not gonna come as a surprise. It's not gonna pop out at the end.
We wouldn't do it after the plan is approved, we would do it as part of the plan approval.
Yeah.
We might see, we don't like.
It was going through the process.
Yeah.
Here's our chance to get what we think we want, let's ask for it and
Yeah.
See where it goes.
Yeah, I have the development standards are supposedly what we want.
But we might see, we, there might be an opportunity for something and.
Maybe there's something unique about the property that we haven't thought of that we need.
Condition or some opportunities that we didn't think about and.
I think it's important to keep in.
Public comment?
Yeah, um.
No. No public comment, can we, we opened it for public comment.
Were you both? Were you both?
Uh, we had the public comment earlier. So why is so important? Go ahead, go ahead, Jim.
I, it's just whatever, Tom was looking for a comment.
I'm looking for approval.
So if the code and what the developer or builder is supposed to do is like law. And you can't change it arbitrarily, arbitrarily. So if this is saying that they bring something in, you don't like it, that you can vote to change it? A lot of them have it in front of me, I'm just going by what you just read. Then you're setting yourself up for a problem. If there is a circumstance.
We had this discussion twice and we reached the conclusion it was staying in.
Okay, I wasn't here for those discussions.
I wanted to.
That's too bad.
I wasn't here.
But we had the discussion.
I'm raising the same issue, uh, in my mind, it's an important issue.
I think you raised it before.
I don't remember that, but anyway, it sounds, sounds like it's four to one, so.
Well, it's, um.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're not, we're not looking to make huge changes, but it's a way of making sure that if there was something that was overlooked, it can be addressed.
Yeah.
And we didn't make this up, it's Scott provided support on this, right?
Oh, yeah. This, I mean, I don't think it's new language.
It's not new language either. No.
And it's not the same as that we're not dealing, we're dealing with a P C D, but it's not the same as the, as dealing with an overlay district.
Right.
Where there are, once they meet those requirements that are in the overlay district, that's what they have to meet. We do, the zoning commission and the trustees, well, I'll take that back, I can't say anything for the trustees because I remember the um, attorney basically saying the trustees can do anything they want.
Yeah.
But the zoning commission can't, uh, so when it comes to the overlay districts, the, the developer knows what they, they have to meet in great detail. When it comes to a P C D, it's a matter of working through the process with the zoning inspector and with the zoning commission, so.
And this particular item has been in the zoning code already.
It was there.
This is not part that, that's not changed anything, this was. Word for.
This was the original land that we've had as part of our P C D.
I don't see where it's been abused at all. But I think that's what Tom's worried about is that it gets abused. I mean, we've got it, we've had good, good zoning and good, you know, uh, zoning board, so it's, it's not been abused. I think Tom's worried that it would be abused.
Okay, so you're basically arguing uh, opposition to approval of the motion that's on the, because we've got a motion on the table. To approve it as it's been amended. So the, that's what we're gonna vote on.
Right.
We're not going back and making changes at this point unless this is defeated. That's what it will require.
Ask for comment, I'm sorry.
No, no, I understand, but what I'm saying is that we do have a motion that we're dealing with and the motion is to approve as corrected.
Okay.
So in order to go back and make another change that Thomas is interested in potentially wanting to make, I don't know if that's really wants to make it or not. He, if, if his argument or his statement here is to oppose the motion, that's what he's doing. So we're gonna vote yea or nay on the motion.
Appreciate it.
If it's a nay, then we go back and we can revise them off.
Okay.
But we have to deal with the motion that's on the table.
Yeah. Good.
Is that understood by everybody, what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to uh, approve application H T Z twenty four oh five.
As corrected.
As corrected.
Which is all.
Which is all four. It is article four, definition of forms, article seven, agriculture residential, article eight, farm residential and article fifteen, planned commercial and office district. So what you're voting on is to either approve it as we have corrected it, or you vote no on the motion. Okay. With that said, any further discussion or question? All right, hearing or seeing none, then, um call for Ruth. It's a roll call, Ruth.
Mike Cavalier?
Aye.
Jenny Manson?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Brittany Harper?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
All right, the motion is carried and uh, with that we can have a motion to adjourn on hearing.
You wanna do, yeah, I, I move that we adjourn hearing H T Z C twenty four oh five. Second.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are, the hearing is adjourned and this will move forward and we've got to get the recommendations that we've made in terms of changes to Scott so that we can get the final copy from him. On art, on these four articles and then also uh, for article twenty one. Uh, there's, there's really no change in that other than making sure that he doesn't keep that phrase at the end in there. I don't think he will, but because he's got it there as a parenthetical note. Okay, now with that, then we will reconvene our general meeting because we've had someone that, I apologize, I anticipated the me, that meeting would be short, but it was much longer than I expected in terms of the, the hearing on the four articles under application H T Z twenty four oh five. So now, sir, back to you and just let your name written down here, sorry.
Here.
Go ahead, go to the mic, uh, microphone, please.
Hi, my, my name's Josh Bynan, I live at one four two four two Fancher Road in Harlem Township, here with my wife, uh, Lexi Bynan. Um, I'm here tonight to uh, discuss what my plan is, um, as far as moving forward with a, um, an application to amend uh, the zoning for uh, a current agri, uh, I believe it's, it's an agris, agricultural residential lot and, um, would like to submit an application to change two acres of that for planned commercial. Um, I have questions, many questions, um, a, a few that I'll ask tonight, I, I'm, I'm sure you guys want to get out of here, but most of my questions I think will be answered during the informal, um, meeting process, which I did have a question about that as well, setting that up. Um, we are owners of Rocket Man, which is a landscape and uh, property maintenance uh, company that we're looking to, um, operate and maintain our equipment on that property, um, which is also the lot that we're living on, um. Am, am I able to ask questions? Wait, is this the time to do that or?
I'm not sure what, you can ask the question and we'll tell you whether we can answer it or not because you know, if you're asking specific questions about what it is that you want to do, probably you will need to go ahead and uh, request, submit a request for uh, an informal uh, discussion.
Okay.
Through the uh, preliminary meeting process.
Okay.
I don't know how much details that you're expecting to get tonight.
Sure, that, not many, I, how do I set that process up or how do we request a meeting for that? And, and who is that meeting exactly with?
Um, well, it's a process that you go through when you're looking at potentially completing an application for planned development. Whether it be commercial, residential, industrial, or whatever it might be.
Okay.
That's an option. Um, but with, with where we are, the process potentially for the P C D is in the pro, what we approved tonight. P C D process is changing.
Okay.
We've made the recommendations for those changes. That, in terms of that going to the trustees for their approval, so, um keep that in mind, cause what, what you might be looking at in terms of the requirements might, might be a little bit different if, uh, once it's adopted by the trustees.
Okay.
That would be basically have taken another two months.
Okay, so if the, if an application is submitted prior to that being uh, amended or.
What's currently on the books.
Okay.
Yes.
So the new application would have to be, uh, would have to abide by the pending um, resolution that's gonna get approved possibly? Or it would go off of the old resolution?
Um. Well, the new result, the, the new changes that were proposed or we approved tonight that we're recommending to the trustees, it goes to them, they will set a hearing date, they have to hold their hearing on it, and if they approve it at the first hearing that they have, then it would be another thirty days from that point before it would go into effect.
Okay.
Um. Um. So the process or the procedures for how you go through the applic, the application process is primarily where the changes are, not so much in what the requirements for the P C D are.
Okay.
But rather what process you will follow to get it approved.
Okay.
I think what he's asking, Mike, is if he starts the process, let's just say he starts it now, before it goes to trustees, see grandfathered into the.
If the application is submitted before the trustees approve it, um, then, uh, before it goes into effect, I should say, then we would follow the existing resolution.
Okay, yes, thank you, appreciate it. Um, and, and then so I guess, because most of these questions will be answered during the informal process, how do I set that up? Do, is there an email that I email? Do I get ahold of Mike? Do I get ahold of, I mean, how do I?
Are you requesting a preliminary meeting to, to go over your general plan?
Yes.
Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
You would, we would need to set a date for that and it would probably be a special date that we'd have to spend.
And there's an application form for that online that you can complete.
Okay.
It's called a request for a preliminary meeting. For uh, subdivision slash planned district. But that is a form that's online.
So when would he bring that to us? Next meeting or?
Uh, well, he can submit the application for the, or I mean, submit the request for the hearing and.
Meeting.
Yeah.
A meeting.
Request for a preliminary meeting.
Request for preliminary meeting, yes.
And then once that request comes in, at one of our other meetings, we'll take that request up and schedule a.
We, as Joni said, because of everything that we've got on our calendar coming up over the next several weeks, we're probably gonna look at having to schedule another special. I doubt if we'll be able to squeeze it into one of the, the regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay, yeah, I'll work on getting that request submitted and then you guys will, uh, someone will reach out to me with a.
Yeah, what you, you, you don't fill out the application for a zoning cha, for a zoning change. For a zoning cha, for a zoning change. You look at that request for the preliminary meeting and it talks about. Specifically, it focuses on. The focus is on the, a uh. Plan.
Development plan. The development plan.
The development plan for your property.
Sure. The concept.
Don't have to deal with the rest of those requirements for an application, just the development plan part.
Okay.
Or these preliminary meetings. Because that's what we're going to want to work through and work and. The purpose of the preliminary meeting is provide you the opportunity to ask some specific questions, give us an idea about what it is that you want to do. And then you get feedback from the zoning commission in terms of. Uh, what changes, if any, we would be recommending to you to consider.
Okay.
Before you decide to submit your application.
Okay.
Would you want to go ahead and put that on the docket though?
No, not that we get something.
We need, he needs to decide if he's going to submit it. Going to cost him four hundred dollars. Well, how much acreage are we talking about?
Just two acres.
It's only a two acre lot?
It's six point three, four acres, uh, but I'm looking to zone just two acres commercial.
Have you got that so uh already uh surveyed? So you've got the two acres?
I, I saw I'm, I, I have a company that's coming out.
Is it a specific separate lot?
It will, it will be, yes.
It will be, but it isn't now.
No.
So you've got six acres and you want to, you want to survey and.
And separate two of the acres off of the six point three and change.
Big enough for. P C D?
Uh, yeah, it is. It's, there's not a. Large requirement and even under the new proposal is minimum is one acre. Or did we take it down?
And I didn't, I think it might be. I think. We made it, we made it. I think we made it smaller. I think under the old conditions it's.
Yeah, it might be smaller. I, I, I'll, I'm going to read that resolution more in depth on the, on the P C D side to verify. I, I, I was thinking it might have been two acres. If it's smaller, it could be smaller.
Well, um. I'm not sure if that. Going to be helpful to you until you can come in and have the preliminary meeting really because. There's not much we can tell you. Without knowing more details and we don't really want to spend time doing that until you've got some. Better idea on paper. In terms of your plan of what it is that you would like to do.
Okay. I will, um, I'll send the request in and. Get plans drawn up and. Sounds great.
Yeah, that's, that would be our suggestion, my suggestion to you. I don't know the other members of the commission have a comment that they would like to make.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
It, it's Bynan, B E Y N O N.
Okay, Mr. Mine, thank you so much for your patience. Okay, well, um, the other items that we have on our agenda are the hearing, uh, I mean, sorry, the minutes. And. We have the minutes from the first hearing um that we had. On. Application H T Z twenty four oh five, and we've decided to postpone. Action on those uh initially, but is there anything that you really need to do? More with that? Do we want to prove this or we? Okay, because we've. The input has already been, had been made previously.
Yeah.
We have a copy of the minutes here. From that first hearing.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from July first for the hearing of H T Z C twenty four oh five.
Okay, sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Joni. Further discussion?
Just, just, I want to mention to Valerie that these, these minutes and the minutes from. Today. Both get combined to give to the trustees with, with the. Application.
Yeah, so we will. Uh. Either need to approve those minutes at our workshop meeting next week or on September third. So that the trustees can have them. Prior to whatever hearing date they may set. They won't. They don't necessarily have to have them before they set that date, but they definitely have to have them before they. Yeah. All right. Um. All in. We have that motion. Did I take call for the vote yet?
Yeah, no. Think so, no.
I don't think I did.
Oh, you didn't.
You started talking.
We, we got.
I made the motion, Joni seconded, you asked for discussion.
Yes, I did. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then let's vote on the motion to approve these minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those minutes are approved. And then um. We have. Minutes. We. We don't have a copy of the minutes for the July.
I have a copy of them.
You should be, as long as got more.
Yeah, it's, it's the one with the small writing. This. Do you want mine?
Oh, it's that one?
Yeah. That one.
Oh, okay, sorry, I do have it. I thought when I saw that gray, I thought it was some. Yeah. And. This, these minutes are now following the format that we need to continue with. Where whatever comments are received. By Valerie. Are in a red line copy. And then we will um all have those so we can see what changes have been proposed. For the purposes of approving them, so there can't be. Any concerns then about uh the minutes being approved without them being reviewed. At. These uh zoning commission meeting. Because that, this is the only place where we can take action. Certainly submit the comments and make recommendations for change and get those to Valerie, but this way then everybody gets to see what. Individual members may. All right, so we're July eighth, let's take a look at these. Changes here and what was originally emailed out are kind of minimal. You'll see the changes in red.
I have no concern. Wasn't there. Oh, yeah.
If you looked at them previously.
Yeah.
Um.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
The things. Just on the second page, second paragraph. This cabinet set a preliminary meeting to discuss the Bryant Bandit. It'd be uh. And it's. It's in. B A N, B A, B A and D I D. And on the third page. I don't read. Um, third paragraph requested a presentation by Crossroads Community. Um, the company is actually Crossroads Community Planning. Just for accuracy. That's it. Sorry.
I'll check out.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of July eighth as corrected.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and it's been by Joni, seconded by Tom. To approve the uh minutes as corrected. Further discussion? On the motion? Now hearing none, then. All in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, those minutes are approved and then. Uh, we do have minutes from um January twenty ninth. The first preliminary meeting.
Uh, July twentieth.
Yeah, July twenty ninth. I say.
What's the comment on the second page in bold that says the Delaware County Health Department? What is missing here? What is, what is that supposed to be?
Oh, yeah.
What is?
That's my comment because all, the only words that were there were the Delaware County Health Department and I don't know who wants to make it any reference to.
I don't know. Let me just remove it.
That's what I was going to suggest too, because I don't.
Okay.
Note that there are. I have three copies of this. And two of them are the same. But one of them is different. The one that. The two that are the same were the, look like they have my comments on them. You'll notice the title of the uh is changed. On one of them, it says zoning commission preliminary application meeting. On the other one, which I changed is zoning commission preliminary meeting for bandit properties.
So that one includes your changes.
That one has mine, yes, yes.
It's Mike, it said it got one that didn't seem to have yours incorporated, so I just make copies of his and yours. And if we compare.
Yeah, this is the one then that you ran off and. Tonight. Distributed to us. So the one that we should be approving. Is. That one, Joni.
Yeah.
So zoning commission preliminary. Applications deleted.
Yeah.
Meeting for bandit property.
And it's not an application.
Because it is not an application. And I thought that I had changed that too. Nope, doesn't show that. Okay. Anyway, that should be changed. Uh. Then it also shows on here. And I have it. Louis was approved. As a member of the zoning commission by the trustees, so. He should be listed as a absent member. There. So just put his name there. They didn't get to Alan.
Yeah.
They proved me back.
But they approved him.
At the last meeting.
The last, okay, because I didn't think you were able to get to.
It was at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, you had to wait till the very end.
So list him as absent as a member. And then Molly Snodgrass is an alternate. Alan hasn't yet been approved. So I mean, he was here tonight, but. He's not listed as a, as an alternate yet.
Oh, Alan's coming back to the zoning commission?
Oh, yes.
Didn't know that.
I said.
Can we talk about that later and finish the minutes?
Yeah.
Please.
So.
Good idea.
Um, anyway, that's where we are. Uh, any more? Comments on these minutes? Yeah. Now. Everything in red. Uh, seemed to have been submitted by me or Joni. And, and.
I have no. I did, no, I'm good. What you have.
I know it's. I'm going to think now when I saw Joni's comments. It was a short timeframe because the twenty ninth was just last week.
Anything? And I don't know if anybody else is really bothered by it, but I'm really bothered by when we list publicly a Zoom as like A A. Or, you know, somebody's iPhone.
And I just take it straight from.
I know, it just.
In every meeting, I ask for names, addresses, and ninety nine point nine.
There's just, there's, there's, there's no excuse for that, though.
So that's where we need to discuss then how do we limit? If they're not going to identify themselves, then they don't get in. But then you're looking at, you're going to have to have two people. And so it's whatever and manage that, so.
Yeah.
Well, everyone who comes, the, the other side of that is everyone who comes to the meeting in person. Doesn't sign in.
They're supposed to.
They're not required to.
We get a lot of signing.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying they're not required to.
I was gonna say, I can really force people to identify themselves. I don't think you can.
If someone wants to speak. Yes, they do have to identify themselves and give their address.
Yeah.
But to just attend the meeting.
Yeah, I take Joni's point about, you know, A A. But at some point you may, you may know who A A is and that it's. It's. It's good to know, well, they were here even though they didn't identify themselves. So you just.
Good way of identifying, it still is their identification.
So I, I mean, it looks strange. It's like, is that a typo? But. I guess I would leave it.
Yeah.
This document. That's what their ID was.
Yeah, that's all you can do.
Yeah.
When you say you contact them, you do that after the meeting?
Not during the chat.
Oh, you're doing it in chat, but they don't respond. Okay. Well. I'll try to remember, maybe someone else can remind me when I forget. During the meeting on Zoom, I will tell them that you're going to be sending them a, a message on chat and they should respond. By giving their name.
You've done that.
You can try.
Okay.
They don't, but we, we keep on doing.
We'll keep trying to get it, but we can't, as I said, we can't really, there's no way to make it.
Go into each individual, and then I even give them the option that if they'd like to send that information. Hmm, privately, they can send it to my email. So they don't have to. Blast their name and address there.
Mm-hmm.
They can send it to me, so I do that. It's just another option, trying to get this information.
Yeah, okay, I would think they would. You know, appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
Nate. Uh, where, where do we stand with the minutes? I don't have any additional comments or.
I don't either.
Suggestions for change.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the preliminary meeting for bandit properties on July twenty ninth as corrected.
I'll second that.
Moved by Brittany, seconded by Tom. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, these minutes are approved, so we, we cut up.
And Louis is abstaining.
Oh. Yeah.
I watched it later and read the minutes, but.
That's all right. You can either vote to abstain or you can vote to approve, or you can vote no. It's perfectly legitimate for you to do any of those three.
So we've got chosen. Got it.
All right. Thank you. Um, now we've already verified that everyone has a copy of um. The. Bandit properties.
Yes.
And that's what we'll be discussing uh in part next week. Uh, as part of our agenda. And then the rest of it will be focused on the solar. She and. Valerie just received today an email from. Um. Scott. Where he has included some additional. Information. I will forward that or send, oh, did you run it off?
I can give.
Okay, I didn't know you had time to do it. Well, you got, you got to step ahead of me.
Take it down every once in a while.
Thank you.
Um, these were the areas that he, that he's been busy working with in terms of making some changes. Um, so if we have time. We'll put this on the agenda next week also.
Thank you, Scott.
Uh, but. The main thing will be to deal with the solar and Mike. He's planning to be there. He's left now, but uh my understanding is he's planning to be there next Monday to talk about solar. So after we deal with Bandit, then we'll get to the solar.
Okay, so that is for August twelfth.
Yeah.
It's for this. And it.
And at what point are we talking about the overlay? When is?
Not till the September.
Oh, September third, thank you. Okay, just making sure it wasn't next week.
No, no.
I'm saying our schedule.
The reason for giving it to you. As early as you have, so you have, it's. It's a pretty lengthy document. You can back and compare how it looks with the ones we've already approved. A lot of the language is the same.
Okay.
That we've already approved. So tho, that portion. We shouldn't have any question. It's those things that are different. Uh, in there, but that. And then um. At our meeting, Holly will walk us through it on September the third. After we've gotten walked through it. Uh, then we'll make the decision about scheduling a hearing for it.
Okay. Anything else tonight or can we adjourn?
Anything else tonight, or can we adjourn?
No, we can adjourn, we can have a motion to.
I make a motion to adjourn, second.
Thank you. Uh, second?
Second.
Seconded by Joni. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? Okay, we are adjourned at ten. Twelve.
Thank God. I'm tired.
Uh, I thought we would get through the hearings of master then.
Yeah. We always hope so.
Yeah. I have, I would guess.